All right, call me in order, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body, considering your Seward advisement of Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of many recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing their council. President shall approach the podium, state the name and address with a clerk's record, and our ask limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Rich Bergen.
Here.
Matt Streisand.
Here.
John Singleton.
Here.
Carl Miller.
Here.
Jessica Coulterman.
Here.
Megan Taylor.
Here.
Katie Antonius.
Here.
Jonathan Wilkin.
Here.
All right, the first three items this evening make up the consent agenda.
Motion, second.
The motion and second is any further discussion?
No, we understand.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
All right, the first administrative item this evening is consideration of an ordinance to extend the franchise agreement with Spectrum Mid-America LLC for cable television. Correct.
Yes, we were approached by Charter Spectrum to extend their current cable franchise agreement that we've had in place since clear back when they were known as Time Warner. And so, we were approached by them, essentially what was looked for is just putting it in congruency with the most recent franchise agreement we offered for cable service, which was the ALO franchise agreement. And so, I know we have firm from Charter here who can kind of speak to it, but Kelly and I looked over it. The one thing that was noted was some slight changes to offered services to kind of nonprofits, schools, and things like that. I checked in with all the ones they offer them to right now, and we won't have any issues. So, we're good to go on those. Other than that, it extends it for the denoted period of time, I believe it's a ten-year extension. And so, me and Kelly have no specific items concerne to, unless you have something on there.
No.
So, we will have, any questions answered, like I said, we do have representation here from Charter Spectrum.
Any questions or comments from the council? Would anyone like to introduce the ordinance?
Oh, we're just going to announce.
All right. An ordinance between the city of Seward and Spectrum Mid-America LLC extending a non-exclusive franchise to Spectrum Mid-America LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a cable television system in Seward, Nebraska, setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise and providing for regulation and use of the system to repeal any ordinance or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form provided for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2023-25, and the title is hereby approved, I do a motion to dispend the statutory rule.
I'll move.
Do we have a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Sign none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
This is ordinance number 2023-25, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second.
A motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, the question, this show ordinance number 2023-25 be finally passed and adopted, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
This is our only ordinance this evening, so only one final motion to make the ordinance a part of the permanent record.
Also move.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
All right, thank you. Item number two, consideration of lease agreement with Black Hills Nebraska Gas LLC for property located at 841 Aspen Street.
We'll tag team this one. Jennifer, do you want me to start with this one?
Go ahead, you please queue it up.
All right, we'll see how well I do on this. I do not claim to be a natural gas expert, so we'll see how well I do and how much correction is going to come from my compatriot. As we've briefly discussed in the past, the city of Seward is starting to move to our capacity in some areas in our natural gas system. The natural gas supply is provided by the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline that is to the north end of the city and kind of runs diagonally. You'll see signs for it. It is piped into the city to a town border station. See, I'm learning these things. Our town border station is the Black Hills Energy Facility right across the street from the CDC on North Columbia. That is kind of the control center that then works into the entire Black Hills Energy Distribution System within the city of Seward. As we've continued to grow and see capacity needs in South Seward, both industrial and commercial, along with our residential growth, there is a need to expand that system as it comes off of Northern Natural Gas. And so, at some point in time, we will need to probably have a second town border station. But until then, to help take care of capacity issues in the city, we went down and met with Black Hills, Jonathan and myself, and worked with Jennifer, and we came up with this idea to temporarily use through a land lease, a site located in a rail campus. This would be directly south of WCR on Aspen Street. This would be a spot that would allow for natural, liquid natural gas holding station that then would be utilized to back up the system. And so, we entered into an agreement, again, our plan is this is most likely a temporary, and when I say temporary, that doesn't mean a couple of weeks or months. Getting a town border station online is a long-term project, but this is to help alleviate some capacity issues as we prepare for that process. And then, once we bring that online, this will most likely be decommissioned and go away and returned back to just a regular rail campus parcel. So, if you want to introduce yourself, name, address, who you're with.
You bet, so I'm Jennifer Peters, Public Relations, and I'm specialist for Black Hills Energy, and I partner with the cities and communities on projects like this when we have a special need. And I'm here primarily to answer any questions you have about the LNG site, facility itself, or something like the contract. But second, I'm here really to thank you guys for your, you know, interest in pursuing something like this. It's an innovative option. We, Black Hills does not have a facility like this in Nebraska. We have two in Iowa, so we're really excited about bringing something like this to Seward. It's really, I mean Greg queued it up really nicely, your growth, your rapid growth has really outpaced our ability to bring as much natural gas to your community as is needed, and that really speaks to the innovation and your focus on economic development. So, this site is really, you can kind of think of it like a peaking station for electricity. It's there to supplement the natural gas use for your commercial properties and your industrial rail yard when it's needed most, on those super cold days, when the wind's blowing really hard and you need that little extra burst. It will provide that supplement to the system for all the businesses in that area and then a little bit outside that. It is temporary, we have been working really, really closely with Northern Natural Gas for quite some time on a south side town border station, and last Greg mentioned, it's a costly endeavor and it is a very time-consuming endeavor. So, we have that slated for 2025 right now. So, the contract is written up with a little bit of open-endedness that we don't foresee going any further than 2025. And right now, we're working with Northern Natural Gas to pin down the exact quarter within that year span to make it happen. But both parties are very committed to the community and expanding the infrastructure and making sure that we have what you need for future expansion and future growth, because we know that you guys are just going to keep on going with everything you have planned. So, we have started on the site with a verbal agreement that to go ahead and keep this moving forward. We want to get the site up and running before those really cold days hit in December. So, right now, we're moving dirt, we have concrete work scheduled, fencing's going to be going in later this month, concrete work sometime this week, I believe. And if everything goes as planned with some nice weather predicted, we're hoping to have the site up and running by the first of December, with a little bit of variance, of course. So, we can't predict right now how much the site will actually be used. Again, it is there just for when you need it most, like, again, with that peaking station philosophy. But we have a great working relationship with Coaxis, the third-party vendor. There's a tech who actually lives twenty minutes away. They service the site in conjunction with us serving as a technician for our end of the project, where the gas goes into the infrastructure and pipeline. So, we have a really close agreement with them, and we'll be monitoring the site very closely. So, we know it's safe and reliable, and we'll serve all the needs that you have for that, for that area of town. But I'm happy to feel any questions you might have, and we're just excited to partner with you guys on this.
Great, any questions or comments from the council?
Great, well, that's good then. Thanks so much.
You bet, thank you. Any other questions or comments, or would I entertain a motion?
Move approved. Second.
A motion and second, is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
Thank you. Item three, consideration of revision to the cemetery rules and regulations. Bob Cork, welcome.
Good evening. Working with cemetery board on the veterans section for probably the last six months, just trying to revise what was already in there, trying to get the veterans section more unified and like a lot of other cemeteries. So, we're trying to come up with the foundations all being the same, along with the headstones, and if they have a vase, allowing the vase and what color they should all be, so everything looks the same. Because you can have your wife with you, so we have some that are singles and some that are doubles, and making sure that everything looks uniformed like in a lot of other cemeteries. So, that's why going through with the cemetery board and working with the funeral homes and stuff, we've came up with those revisions that you've been given. We think that's, that's going to work best for us, and everything will be pre-cast granite foundations that they'll sit on, and all be gray along with the vases and everything, and everything will be there. We'll take the old ones out, I think there's six, six of them out there, six or seven that are out there right now. So, we'll get everything up to code and uniformed and everything, and then from then on, we should be good to go with the veterans section, make sure that everything looks uniformed and everything, so.
So, these changes were reviewed by the?
By the cemetery board.
With any concerns?
No, they had no concerns.
No, they were driving this, they wanted the consistency.
With that, is there any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise entertain a motion?
Move approved.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
Thanks, Bob. Item four, consideration of a resolution adjusting recreation fees, increasing fees for youth programs. Welcome back, Bob.
Well, Adam's going to take this one.
Oh, Adam, yeah. Good evening. I'm hoping in your packet you can kind of give an itemized kind of current registration rate and then a suggested registration rate. We're looking at just basic economy issues and different things that we have currently. This hasn't been updated since 2016, so we're looking to get this updated to kind of keep up with uniform costs, hats, balls, just basic equipment needs that we have for all of our recreational programming. So, these were the suggestion rates, looking at other kind of areas that people had, like Garland, surrounding cities, different things like that. One of the things where economy set up was not everybody has the same thing that we have, so we were doing it based off of what our needs are and what we feel like would be sustainable for our youth programming.
Did this, was this discussed by the Parks and Rec Board?
Yes, this is already approved to bring to council, for these rates.
Any issues or concerns?
No.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Matt?
I think that Adam and Bob have been looking at this for a long time. I think Parks and Rec Board, I know it was brought up last spring and summer, so this isn't something that they're taking lightly and stuff. And so, I think everybody in council needs to be aware, like Adam said, it hasn't been changed since 2016. So, if there are questions, people in public approach us, you know, that's something that's being taken really seriously. But they've done a lot of research on what other cities need to have and what other programs cost and stuff, and we're a little behind in what we're charging. So, and not to say that there won't be anybody, there's a, there's a fund for anyone that can't come up with their own money to participate, and Adam and Bob won't turn anybody, turn anybody down.
That is a good point, we have a sponsor for that program, so we won't, we're not going to turn anybody down as a recipient doing our recreational programming.
I just want to commend these guys too, this is kind of a sensitive subject, and I know for us that have kids right now that are doing youth sports, we see both the fees here, because a lot of our kids or all of our kids participate in the rec program, usually when they're younger. But we also see when they transition to other programming, or maybe they're going to Lincoln. The one I use is the one I coach, for example, I coach tackle football here at Seward. The comparable Lincoln youth football for tackle football, ours is moving up from thirty-five to fifty dollars. The base level tackle football program in Lincoln is three hundred and eighteen dollars, I think. So, it is a substantial difference in regards, not, I wouldn't say the quality is, but it's just looking at the cost to get in. I mean, I think these are very, very reasonable comparisons to what the alternatives are, where people can go to other places for similar in-like program, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I ask someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have to introduce the resolution on this one, so did you want to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay. Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2023-20. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Can't make this easy, can we?
I'm going to go with Miller and Taylor on that one.
Is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
Thank you. Item five, discussion of removal of Centennial Park bathrooms. Bob?
Yes, if you've ever been to Centennial Park, it's over at the fairgrounds, across the bridge. There is a restroom clear back and towards the back corner by the, by the playground, yeah, Kitty Corral. I know it's been there since nineteen eighty, because Bob Myers told me when he was a kid, he remembers being there. I don't know how old it is, but it's been there since nineteen eighty. We ran into a problem with the septic tank. It's, it's leaking. The, working with the wastewater department, they pump it out for us, and they pumped it out five to six times already this summer. So, we got a leak somewhere where it's seeping in underground water and probably leaking out other stuff as well. Talking with the rec board and everything, the cost to have somebody come in and take the old one out and put a new concrete one in, either, they're saying it's around a thousand to fifteen hundred gallons. You're looking at fifteen thousand to two thousand comfortably, or twenty thousand, sorry, fifteen to twenty thousand comfortably to have it removed and put a new one. It gets vandalized probably more than the most out of all the parks, restrooms that we have, just because it's kind of out of the way and across the bridge and everything. We're constantly down there fixing things, replacing things, painting, cleaning up graffiti and stuff like that. We're asking to remove it completely. We would go in there with the wastewater and empty that out, fill it with concrete up to a certain point, cap it, bury, and then cut it back and bury it, and then remove the bathroom altogether and seat it and potentially expand Kitty Corral with updated equipment down the road. Just looking to get your approval to do that, or see what you would like us to do with that.
With the Parks and Rec Board, was, was there any other discussion or concern with that?
No, there wasn't. They understood, we had talked about some of the vandalism and stuff in the past that were going on down there and other things.
Are, where, where would be the closest than public restroom?
Mop and park, which is attached to the pool.
Okay. I didn't know if any of the other buildings had unlocked bathrooms.
I don't know what the can, or what the fairgrounds, what restrooms they have around there. At one time when we used to have our shop down there, the bathrooms by the horseshoe pits used to be open. So, I don't know if those still are, I don't know what they, what their rules are.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, come in.
One, one option brought up during the Parks and Rec meeting was, you know, an outhouse like we have up at Plum Creek Park by the cattle.
Porta potty.
The porta potty, excuse me.
I'm sorry, porta potty.
Yeah.
And we do, and there is a concrete slab in the, in the middle, that roundabout, by that far shelter there. You could potentially put a porta potty maybe in the middle, where it wouldn't get vandalized.
Sure.
We've talked about that to see if there, if people, if there was a need for it, that they asked for one down the road or something like that as well.
I mean, the reality is we have other parks around town that don't have bathrooms.
Right.
At all, so it's not like this is unprecedented, but you know, that makes sense.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, Mayor, is that if you're looking at an, you know, expenditure of twenty thousand dollars to upgrade what is probably one of the least utilized bathroom facilities, other than vandalism, highly utilized, you have the option of a park that's super heavily used, like Carol K Park, for instance. Lot of users, no restroom facilities, really nothing close until you go to a whole nother park that's Plum Creek Park. We've also had the discussion, and we put off this year, renovating the restroom facilities at Plum Creek Park. And so, and their usage is probably one of the highest in the entire city for a publicly available, right on the trail. I mean, it hits a lot of usage ones, and so, that would probably be a far better use of twenty thousand dollars. But that's kind of the things you have to weigh is usage, location, other projects that could benefit more from a renovation or update. Just throwing those things out there.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the removal, you have a second, is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Antonius, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Bergen.
All right, next we have update on the Wellness Center. Welcome, Joel.
Good evening, everyone. Couple different updates and all really exciting things. Obviously, last week was historic day for us to be able to do the groundbreaking ceremony. Dirt had been moving for a couple of weeks, but we were able to do the ceremony last week, thank you to all that brave the elements and came out for that, because it was pretty brutal. I, the ceremony went well, I can guarantee that all the speeches when we do the ribbon cutting will be as short as they were last Tuesday. But, but it, that will be, that will be a great time when we can do that in, in hopefully a year and a half. But that was obviously a great time, a good benchmark to pass. We have another construction meeting tomorrow, we have those every two weeks with any updates. I know that there's mostly going to be dirt work done until the beginning of next year. There will be some rebar delivered, nothing overly exciting, but once we get closer into the spring, there will be some parts of the building that are delivered, and we'll be seeing some things like that. At the end of last week, we received some very exciting news that all the fundraising had been secured. And so, that was obviously a huge and exciting, fantastic time to know that all of that had been secured. And so, able to announce that to you for Shane Bach. And with that, we've been working with Shane to give us some more updated numbers on cash that they have in hand right now and from grants, what to expect, so that we can, we're getting close to being able to finalize our financing for the project and decide, and bring to the council what is, what is recommended and the different options. So, that, that's a very positive step, and it continues to be exciting and things moving up there. I know I receive a lot of comments that people have noticed that things are going on up there. That, those are the main things, but all exciting things that just keep moving the project forward. Any questions with any of that? Anything to add?
No, I just want to thank Joel and his work on, I'm getting these prepped, and again, we're meeting about every two weeks now with Sampson. I think tomorrow will be our last in-house meeting, and then I believe also, most likely a trailer is also going to be dropped off up there, and then we'll be meeting on-site with the construction team and going out and touring construction every two weeks or as needed to see how the building's expanding. But that Sampson system that they have for construction is very comprehensive in the, in the case of, they go through and take photos of everything they're doing, as they're doing it, it all goes into the system. We can go back through and look, hey, was this electrical panel on this wall put in the way we wanted it? Did it include these things before the casing was put around it, whatever it may be? There's all of that and more in there, there's more bells and whistles than we could ever imagine, but it's also a clearinghouse for them and their subcontractors. So, we get into a bit of depth when we have these contractor and construction meetings. And then BBH is also part of that, helping, you know, fix issues and things that come up that maybe need a little bit of an architectural redesign real quickly, but obviously we haven't ran into those yet. Again, I also want to thank everybody that was involved in the groundbreaking, I was making the joke that we all got to take away a little bit. Our parting gift was, I think, the grittiness.
Little grit.
Yep, that's, that was your parting gift, you took some of the Wellness Center home with you.
Congratulations.
But it was a, it was a pretty neat experience up there, and I, like I said, I think when we get back to the ribbon cutting, it might be slightly different, hopefully warmer. Again, we're hoping for our, our current construction calendar right now is March of twenty-five, so it may be cold when we're done there too, but we could plan, we could plan a ribbon cutting maybe a little bit deeper into the spring, maybe we get into May ribbon cutting, it's a little warmer, so.
With those construction meetings on-site, they'll take us around and we'll walk around the, all of the construction site, and they'll show us, you know, what's going on along with the pictures, there's all online. Any update that they do, we receive a notification of, so we're, we're kept up to date, Sampson does a nice job.
The last one is, is I think there's also some elements that Jonathan and myself have been working on for still some more grant funding that's part of our strategic plan or district plan for our arts, that also included the Wellness Center actually because of its ability to apply for CCCFF grants, which we've not been successful with, with this one, but we think this is our opportunity, so that will be run through one more time. And so, the initial grant offering has been sent off for that one by Jonathan and his crew and myself, and so, we'll see where that one comes back. So, still an opportunity to maybe get some more grant funds or other funding in there to help supplement. Every, still all the funds we get in helps supplement and reduce the, now the burden on the taxpayer, because the rest of the facility is fully funded.
Any other questions or comments for Joel? Saying none, thank you. Next, we have the city administrators report.
Just a lot of randoms right now, getting ready for audit, working with Derek on a number of items, closing out DTRs, bringing new finance director Golden up to speed on TIP. We had employee evaluations and goals and worked through all of that. Other than that, it's also keeping track of the big projects, you know, we're trying to wind down for the winter season for these stormwater projects on Park and Bradford, the East Seward Evergreen is open, so I'm very excited about that. That was a big item, so now we have a little bit more access and in and out over after the East Seward Street project. We'll still be finishing out some technical items over there, but all the roadways are now open. And then, working on just some peripheral winter items in relation to the golf course and other things, closing out the year. Um, and then working on just some peripheral winter items, uh, in relation to the golf course and other things, closing out the year. So, can you answer any questions you have on the report?
Any questions or comments, Greg? Is not entertain a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Tanyas, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan.
Are there any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Seeing none. Uh, next we have the announcement of upcoming events. Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Uh, we have, of course, the thirteenth annual lighted Christmas parade coming up, uh, here on the Saturday after Thanksgiving along with the wonderful festivities of the Christmas Festival. Uh, would encourage you to, uh, share that out. We have flyers now with all the calendar of events, uh, on it. If you'd like a, a copy of that, uh, feel free to reach out. We'll, we'll drop that off for you. Thanks to council member Taylor and many other wonderful volunteers. We had a fun time working on the thirty-seven foot long polar bear, getting him, uh, brushed and ready to go with lots of extra lights this past Saturday. Um, and you'll also be seeing, of course, like the Santa House be downtown, all the fun coming here in the coming weeks. We sincerely appreciate the partnership of the city to help get a lot of that stuff ready. Um, the other kind of exciting piece, uh, also a wonderful partnership with the city, um, putting speakers, uh, along the downtown, um, on the, that'd be the uh, north side of the courthouse square, um, to have speakers for the parade this year, and we'll be able to play Christmas music, holiday music, um, throughout the season. Uh, whereas we've had a very kind of outdated speaker system in the past, we're excited to move into the twenty-first century with that new system. From, uh, many generous donors and the electric carton helping run con, uh, through the conduit, uh, to, to install those speakers. Um, also mentioned, we have a professional development luncheon coming on, uh, Friday, December first with Nurse Nancy in partnership with our local hospital. Uh, she's a keynote speaker, humorist. Will focus on topic of health and wellness in the workplace. We'll have that at, at the hospital if you'd like to join us. Uh, we kicked off our, our, uh, membership campaign here for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the reason I note that is because we have a number of one-on-one, uh, meetings that we have with businesses throughout the membership campaign. This year, we're focused on doing a number of formal, what are called business retention and expansion visits. Uh, because we have to renew, we have to recertify the city of Seward as an economic development certified community. Um, so many of you may be impacted through your, your businesses, um, but also you can see that coming down the pipe. We have to do that every five years. It helps the city be eligible for a number of different grants, and so we're committed to continuing to help, help the city be a leader in the state through that program. Also, um, speaking of just being a leader in the state, we're getting ready to try to renew our LV eight forty economic development program. That happens every ten years. Of course, everything has to fall at the same time. Uh, but we'd encourage you to, to just keep up to date on those efforts for LV eight forty, uh, renewal, um, campaign. Our organization is fully behind that. The chamber board has voted to endorse it, um, and so appreciate their leadership on that. You may have seen letters to the editors start to go through. You're gonna start seeing, uh, campaign signs go out. Uh, depending on how, uh, you may be willing to partner with us, we'd appreciate you supporting it. Um, you know, obviously, you're gonna have constituents ask questions. If you don't have, uh, direct answers, please send them our way. We're happy to answer them. Make sure that there's a, a clear distinction. This is not a new tax in any way, shape or form. We really need to get that out there quickly. Uh, this is just a renewal of what's already been going on, and I think you can see all the wonderful success stories that we've seen, especially in downtown Seward. The way that it looks different from ten years ago to now. LV forty's been a critical piece of that puzzle to, to help, um, revitalize downtown Seward. So putting, ask for your support of the LV eight forty renewal campaign. And last, so we did turn in our last piece of the creative arts district, the application. That was a long process, but it does make us eligible for CCCFF, which will hopefully support the Wellness Center among many other arts and culture projects throughout, uh, the historic downtown district. So with that, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Jonathan. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, sorry.
Move by Miller's second.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Tanyas, Coulterman, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan.
Alright, thank you all and have a great night.